Okay, June is July 1, 2024, 10 o'clock, at a college meeting to order and roll call smiling. Eric Stark, Ms. Murphy, here. Number four, approval of minutes of last meeting, June 24, 2024. Any additions or corrections anybody saw? Excuse me, I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number five, discussion and possible action regarding the ODOT form 324A claim for form for project JP 3177804 for District 1. Title, parcels 1, 2, 3, and 4, and write legals, prepare easements, five parcels in right way, staking, five parcels in the amount of $11,400 assigned to Pinnacle Consulting Management.
Doesn't ask for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, to just, to just approve them doing it. It is.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to be approved now.
I'll second that. All in favor?
We'll have three places to sign on.
Oh, it's on the grid.
Five inches.
All on both of them, or just this last one?
Just the last one, had an inch and a half, each and six tenths, thirty, and then five inches. Number six, discussion and possible action regarding the Red Cross Inferment Red Cliff Midstream LLC.
Okay, so that's District 3.
Now.
And.
He called me. That's down there tops, corner of a mile, north of Miley's.
Are they running?
They're going to well.
Oh, okay, water.
Yeah, I think it's pipeline.
Oh.
Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
They sent $500, is that correct?
I'm not sure they did.
Or they're born under the road.
Okay, so there's three of them, they sent one check, so.
Just one of them's aboard?
I don't know, she didn't tell me.
She didn't, just one, one road is aboard, I think.
Okay. Okay, can I motion?
Yeah.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number seven, approve, disapprove, monthly reports for the following, assessor, county clerk, court clerk, health department, treasurer, election board, and sheriff.
And the only ones I have received is the assessor, the county clerk, and the health department.
I'll make a motion, the three that we received.
Just approved of the three.
Yeah.
I'll second that, all in favor? I really don't know.
She there today?
No.
My one and a half, I haven't felt through it, so.
Oh, really? You said you had another one, is it a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Okay, ready? Discussion, possible action regarding resolution yearly contract renewals fiscal year 2024, 2025. See it attached resolution 24-25-01.
So, I do have those still, and they're all right here. The individuals, but we'll have to also sign, but if we can, sign this and then we can sign the seventh.
The big deal, is it?
Yeah, yes.
The three pages, or two pages?
It's, yeah.
All that listed is right there.
So let me.
Oh, the health department is a back page, it's everywhere, okay.
Yes. So.
Well, it's pretty standard operating.
We need a motion to approve them.
To approve all these that are listed.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor? That's approving 47 on attached by. Right, numbers?
Yeah, all of those, yes, uh-huh, and they're all in here.
Yeah, yeah, I caught that too.
This one makes it.
Okay, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the health department annual contracts for fiscal year 24, 25. See attachment resolution 24, 25, 02.
And they want, I have an original, and we got an original, which is two of those, and then they're little stacks right here.
Some of them.
House circuit?
All in favor?
Aye.
There, the sign is chairman, I just signed that second one, I signed the first one. Okay, number 10, I guess this is the start of those that will be for the next two or three months.
Right, yeah, we only got one so far.
Number 10, discussion and possible action regarding resolution of detention contract fiscal year 24, 25, Northwest Oklahoma Regional Juvenile Detention Center, Western Plains Youth and Family Services Incorporated, $68 per child per day. Some of them.
Second.
Favor?
We got ten of them, eight, several of them that we do.
Yeah.
Usually, yes.
Several more to come.
Yeah. I was shocked, I only received one.
First day of the year, they probably forgot, and then it's the first day. Number 11, approve, disapprove, Woods County temporary appropriations for fiscal year 24, 25, in the amount of $885,199.39, which is eighty percent of last year's budget. Some of them.
Second.
Favor? Number 12, discussion and possible action regarding Woods County Health Department estimate of needs for fiscal year 24, 25, in the amount of $1327,000. Some of them.
Second.
Favor? Number 13, discussion, possible action regarding bid 23, 24, 14, six knuckle bids. All research.
Oh, I saw that big print again. Oh, you use it in a payment?
Yeah. Did you say John Muth Hall from Western Aggregates?
Yeah, I have it.
How, how, how further is it?
It's like, like seven miles, eight miles further, or three miles, it's not very much.
Than Enid?
No, than Godey Boe, it's, it's off down there, Godey Boe. But instead of going down to Clinton and to Godey Boe, you kind of go off over there towards Weatherford and south of Hydro.
Oh.
Well, see what, there's no question, DeLisi's cheaper on that.
And they're better too. When I went and got that Western, it was pretty dirty.
Okay.
They had the three eights bid that six months, and I only got like four of those, because there's a lot of fines.
You see what I'm looking at, the, what we'd have to compare, it's on page four, government materials. Essentially, Western aggregates and DeLisi are the only ones that bid, but there's like $11 difference, or 10, in going to, uh, Western and going to Enid, $10 a ton. You follow where I'm coming from?
But, but the three eights, or the five eights, is, they don't, you know, Western aggregates didn't get it. What they got, the screens, recorder crusher, and this.
I know, but what I'm looking at, and she's got the Cooperton listed as the, but the next one over is from DeLisi and Enid.
Yeah.
And comparing DeLisi and Enid, and Western aggregate is what I was getting at about the cost.
But if it's further, if it's as far as Cooperton, then it's really.
Well, it'd be that first number, this is your Cooperton number.
No, that's a little bit, that's a Cooperton, but if, if you wanted to go to Enid to get two loads a day, you compare it, if, compare the Enid price against Western aggregates. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, going all the way to Godey Boe, yes, that's compare the, the in yellow, that's compared to going to Western.
Yeah.
And they're love, there. But if you wanted to go to Enid and save the time, is what I'm getting at, is a person would have to do some figuring in, in the time and freight, for that much, if you wanted to.
But if the distance is similar.
Yeah, but just use the, the excuse that it's not, they don't have what you need, that their three eights is dirty, like, out here, you know, and it would, it wouldn't work as good as this, you know.
Okay.
And I think these two, there is no comparison, one's a hundred mile away, and one's. You're wanting to get them in Enid.
Yeah, I want to know if that's the, if, on the mileage deal is all I was wondering, because that's, that'd be the difference.
For you, I'm a hundred mile, and you're a hundred and twenty-five mile versus, you know.
Right.
But that, that Western aggregates further down than by Godey Boe, I mean, it's.
Well, it's, it's.
A little bit further, you said, but.
It's like six, seven miles further, but you kind of got to go off in a different direction to get to it. But when I got it, it, it wasn't very good quality, had a lot of fines in that three eights, is what I'm saying, dirty.
Okay.
So, I mean, that was just my experience with it.
Okay, so, quality could be duh.
Yeah, that should be something.
So we're past the wall, and that, anything else, let's see, railroad yard and Sunbelt, you just have to look to see which one to use. Jip rock was, well, it is. I mean, same, same, same thing with Hoskins got the bid, but it's, you know, that fifty cents, doesn't, you know, you can't go down forty-six miles to get a load of rock for fifty cents.
You guys use half inch, or what, about this?
Five eights.
It's a cap, not a half inch. No, you said Otmax for Woodford, Son of a Woman.
104?
Yeah, well, I just, Enid didn't bid it, huh?
But well, that's the same. Enid, Collins is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, they don't, they haven't bid on it. We took that outfit asphalt, uh, Clinton.
That's actually up for a bid, isn't it? That's actually up, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was like eighty.
That's what I thought, yeah. Where was your chipping and sealing last six months? How much was your chipping and sealing, Randy? I haven't been able to close it.
I haven't gotten there yet.
Four thousand nine hundred and fifty.
That's pretty close, I think it was four thousand eight hundred and something.
I think so, yeah.
Last, yeah, so. Is that, uh, pest? D N H, uh, N H, baby.
Chips, oil, about it. I mean, there, I can't read that, I don't know what that says.
Oh, that stuff that, wait there, you're gonna have to get glasses.
Yeah, yeah, I have to read that.
Uh, that just says, that's just your vendor's names.
All tax information along with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can read it, but I think he'll give me a hint by the end of it. The different colored ink is what's jacking with it.
Are you forty now?
Huh?
Are you over forty now?
I'll be fifty-six in five days.
Because that's when it hit me, there's a forty.
It really got me.
At the last.
I probably used reading glasses.
If I've got plenty of light, I can still see.
That has a lot to do with it, it gets a color, yeah, so it needs to. So what do you, you want me to make the motion to accept all of these bids, this kind of as they are?
The little bids as, as they are, is what I, it appears to me.
That looks, you know, to me, too.
I don't see, we don't have any choice on trucking, or any of that stuff, like we have in the past, and so.
There's that many people still out there doing the trucking, there was.
You know, there's gonna be some, some, explaining on like our Jip Rock, why we get it at, at Allied instead of Hoskins, but we can do that, we, he'll sign off on it.
Right, we can write something in it.
You've had that same issue, but I think you could probably argue the same fact with your chips coming from Enid.
All right, I, I just circle it on mine, is poor quality on the Western.
And then you can figure your time.
Yeah.
To go on down there.
Yeah.
Versus two loads a day.
Yeah.
One, you know, and.
Right.
So that's my motion.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is all me, so. Okay, number 14, discussing, discussion and possible action regarding bid 23, 24, 15, annual ballot bids. Okay, normally on that, we just, we let Holly decide.
Right, well, they just got one this year, so it was from Royal Franty, so, and I got all of a sudden, it's on her page.
A luge.
Second.
One, one's all it is, then, that's all it takes, it is.
Yeah, that's who she wants.
All right, all in favor?
So she said she knew me. She's certain contracts, and she doesn't. Oh.
I guess she's got her own account?
Yeah.
Okay, number 15, reproof, fiscal year 24, 25, appointments as they were at Rail Park 3 Wardman. And that would just be Alan Poe, Stan Bickler, Todd Holder, and Scott Rock, for him.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
And I don't have the paperwork for the next item, so, no action on 16?
Oh, okay. No action on number 16, so, 17, discussion, possible action regarding signing of a OED reimbursement form for Stoll's Telecom Invoice Number 004263 on the Greenlee Fire Department Reap Grant WD24-6 in the amount of $6,529.81. Must be something about radios. Some of them.
Second.
All in favor? Accessories and stuff, probably to finish that truck, or.
Yeah, and then I think that a place, we'll be able to close that one out next time.
How many do we have left?
Royal Water District 2.
I mean, the fire department.
Oh, they've, they've got everything, they've got everything. Yeah, we're just. Yeah, we're just waiting to try and get all the paperwork, so we can clear everything out.
Okay, number eighteen, discussion, possible action regarding surplus and disposal of a rifle for the Sheriff's Department, I D number V six oh six dash oh one two. This is one we moved to this week, and I, and she found out that it's all kosher, so, we can prove that, just see if it, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor.
All right.
Now he's got him near, here. I think maybe more like a hog gun, is this the next one?
It's, it's-
Or part of it.
Part of it, uh-huh.
Six hundred and sixty dollars, paid on fifteen. There's a rest of that, that's another portion. New business, anybody got any?
They just got more places on, I think, I didn't look through it.
Yeah, that's it.
Outside of, we've got some roads closed from yesterday, we do, and-
Fire and water. It's like fire and shooting, that river canyon.
Do they know what started it? I'm just curious what is starting fires.
Brushy, old messy.
Okay, that is. Okay, number twenty, approve, disapprove blanket first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
On favor. Number twenty-one, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll do two.
I'll second, we're here at that.